We ready to go? Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the September 11th, 2023 meeting of the University City City Council to order. This evening, we have Ms. Kena Dean, who is substituting for our city clerk. Ms. Dean, would you please call the role?
Councilman Clay.
Present.
Councilman Klein here.
Councilman McMahon.
Here.
Councilman Hales.
Here.
Councilman Fuller.
Here.
Councilman Smotherson.
Here.
Mayor Crowe.
Here. Thank you very much. Before we move forward, I think as everyone is well aware, today being September the 11th has been 22 years since we've lost over 3,000 people in our country on a vicious attack. As always, our condolences go out to the family members of everyone who perished on that day and those who have succumbed to illness since that time. We hope that we never experience such an attack again on our soil, or frankly, anyone else experienced that type of an attack. I know on behalf of my colleagues and all of the residents of University City, I would like to express my condolences and ours to the families of the three young men who tragically died this past week in a car accident in University City on Groby Road. Let us hope again that these tragedies do not occur. And again, to the families, we extend our deepest sympathies. Before you, you have the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda? Mr. Smotherson?
Oh.
I may have a motion to approve. Motion made by Mr. Hales. Is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Clay. Is there a discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. We have no proclamations this evening. You have before you the August 14th, 2023 study session minutes on the pension plan updates. Is there a motion to approve? Motion made by Mr. Clay. Is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Fuller. Is there a discussion? Mr. McMahon.
I think I'll be abstaining. I was not present for that.
Okay, let the record reflect that Mr. McMahon will be abstaining. Any other questions or concerns? Ms. Klein?
I'm abstaining.
Thank you very much. A second abstention. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. You now have before you August 14th, 2023 regular session minutes. Is there a motion to approve? Motion made to make Derek. Is there? Seconded by Mr. Hales. Is there a discussion? Mr. Clay?
I need to amend the record. I was not present either at at this meeting, I don't believe.
At the regular?
At the regular or the study session. So I voted in error for the study session. Dawned on me, I was not at this. So I will be abstaining.
Understand. Understand. Any other abstentions, questions, changes to the minutes? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. We have a number of appointments. I believe that Mr. Clay has the floor. We'll go one at a time. Mr. Clay?
Yes, I'd like to reappoint Matthew Emden to the Green Practices Commission.
Is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Smotherson. Is there a discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. Mr. Clay?
Yes, I'd like to nominate for reappointment Cynthia Ziris to the Library Board.
Is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Hales. Is there a discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. Mr. Clay?
Yes, I'd like to nominate Jane Zenny to the Urban Forestry Commission.
Did we skip a few or? We are.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I did skip. My apologies. Chris. Chris Coley, I would like to nominate for the Parks Commission.
Okay, is there a second? Seconded by Ms. Klein. Is there a discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. Mr. Clay?
Ms. Stewart has been withdrawn.
Beg your pardon?
Has been withdrawn. I had alerted Ms. Reese.
Okay.
So she has been withdrawn.
Okay.
So that takes me to Jane Zenny nominated for Urban Forestry.
Is there a second? Seconded by Mr. McMahon. Is there a discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. Mr. Clay? My, my, my. Got one more, right?
Yep. Finally Suzanne Schumer nominated for the Green Practices Commission.
Is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Fuller. Is there a discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. Mr. Smotherson?
I thank Mayor Crowe. I would like to nominate Susan Armstrong to the Stormwater Commission.
Is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Hales. Is there a discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. Please let the record reflect that Christopher McManus was sworn into the Traffic Commission on August 25th in the Clerk's office. We'll now turn to our first section of citizen participation. This section is limited to 15 minutes. For those of you who have just come in, if you'd like to, you can pick up a sign up sheet over on in the corner. When you come to the microphone in the podium, if you'll hit the button at the bottom, you'll see a green light come on and that will let you know that the microphone is going. We ask that you give your name and address and limit your comments to five minutes. This particular part of the agenda is for non-agenda items. And first request to speak this evening is from Mr. James Hoskins.
Good afternoon, Council, Mayor.
If you could give your name and address, then we'll go forward. Thank you.
My name is James Hoskins. I live 8826 Amherst Avenue. I've lived in University City since 1969. Now start working in U City in 1971 as a physical education teacher. But tonight I'm here on behalf of the Recreation Department. I tell you what. The tennis courts in University City serves all the metropolitan area. And it's got to the point where all the teaching pros, some of them have signs up saying that I'm a pro, contact me. And what happened when they get there, they get a tennis court. If they have four people, four lessons on Saturday, they'll take the first person. When that second pupil come in, they'll set them on the side. Then when that first one leave, they take another one. They take up about four or five courts every Saturday and Sunday. And pickleball is coming. It's hard to get a tennis court. Now, when I first moved here in 69, it was $5 a day. You had to get a permit for that day, or you could get a permanent permit. Well, a year of the permit, and it was $35. We didn't have any problems. And I don't remember what year. But I taught tennis in University City for the high school for over 20 years. We never had any problem. We would get a permit to use the courts. But now something need to be done. And I'm serious about it. Not only that, some of the municipalities like Westwood Grove, City St. Louis, Clayton, they charge. Okay, all the people from the city, East St. Louis, they come to Heeman Park and play tennis. It's hard to get a court. I think we need to have some kind of system whereas we have a monitor like we used to have. And they would monitor the court. They would come to Flynn Park and stay for about 30 or 40 minutes. Then they would go to Flynn, check those court, just rotate. And you only need that from say April to September. Now, that's pretty much what I have. And that's why I came, because somebody's gonna get hurt. The guys that have tennis teams, they come, they practice on the courts. And if one get there, the next one get there, each one of them will go to a court and put their bag down and wait till everybody get there. Now, the way the people are today, you can't go out there and ask, you can go out there and ask them, but you can't make nobody move. And those signs you have, nobody read that. They have signs up at Kaufman Park where I live and where I play most of the time. Nobody wants to get on the court. That's it. And pickleball people, they come in, they get on the court. It'd be 20 people sometime, and they take up three or four court. People come all the way from Festus to play pickleball. So that's what I have for you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next request to speak is Yvette Liebesmann.
Hi, I'm Professor Yvette Joy Liebesmann. I live at 7570 Cornell Avenue. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak to you. I've come here tonight to talk about the proposed revisions to City Hall. After watching the recording on August 22nd, the City Council meeting, I have some serious concerns about the current direction of the project. First, it seems that no matter what, we're not going to be able to turn this building into what we need. Even if we had unlimited funds for the renovation, we still would not be able to provide sufficient parking. The Sally Port is dangerous and there's no way to create one that meets the needs of what are the best practices for one, no matter what the budget is. And there's nothing I've seen in the plans to address the unsafe single access point right here on the fifth floor. Second, to cut the project down to the budget we have available, we have some unacceptable choices to make. We have to choose two out of these three: Police Station, Trinity, and the One Stop Shop. And even if we do the One Stop Shop, we're losing that second, more accessible access to on the first floor. If we don't renovate Trinity, we're not in compliance with the Ferguson Accords. And if we don't do a One Stop Shop, we are losing one of the major purposes of this renovation, and that's to serve our citizens. And yet somehow Navigate was led to believe that this last item was a wish and not a must. There is a disconnect between what the council finds important and what is being conveyed to Navigate, and this troubles me immensely. It's almost as if the person communicating to Navigate is conveying what they want and not what the council wants. From the meeting, I garnered the following concerns from you guys. Councilman Clay and Hales are very concerned that we need a One Stop Shop, and more broadly, that we have a facility that truly serves our citizens. Councilman McMahon's major concern is that we truly need to move the police out of the trailers. Yet the plan as conveyed on April 22nd makes changes to the renovations that won't even meet our police department needs. It proposes a lower quality of material for the jail cells, moving the evidence room, and again, does not change that unsafe Sally Port. So now I want to give you some of my thoughts after watching these videos and learning more. First, there really appears no way to renovate this building in Trinity to satisfy what we need out of a government center that will serve our citizens the best. And second, this is a renovation. I'm pretty sure some of you have renovated houses or know someone who has. And what are the contractors gonna find when they open the walls? What are the problems that are going to emerge when they cut into and what that will cut into our already stretched budget and that will require cuts into what we can do here? If you've ever seen the HGTV show, Love It or List it, it's not that different. It with regard to the problems that pop up and projects that have to be eliminated from the planned scope. Third, this building is near the eastern edge of our city, and to me, it sends a message that the loop is what matters. It's not a good perception regardless of whether this is true. I don't believe it is, but it still conveys that message nonetheless. Finally, we need to lose an emotional attachment to these beautiful buildings and focus on what the best use of our funds as sewers of our city budget and what gives us everything we need in a government center. We need to seriously consider and ask Navigate to give us a proposal for a new construction of a government center closer to the center of the city. I've been told that there is a possible location, for example, at 77 Olive, which based on the cost of the new Olivet Center would run, which ran around $14 million and had a two-story 37,000 square foot new building that houses their administrative offices, council chambers, police department, fire department, and it meets all of their needs in a state of the art building and serves their citizens well. Building a new facility, perhaps at 77 Olive, would also move our government center much closer to our city center and give a strong perception that we care about the entire city. And with inflation, yeah, probably maybe it'll cost 18 million, and that still is 6 billion under budget from what you have allocated for this project. And with some of that surplus, we could invest into this beautiful building. If one of our priorities is to make our government work for our citizens, this includes accessibility and adequate parking, and building a new facility is the best way we can serve U City. I mean, I love this building. And we can find some beautiful uses for it. With the money saved, we can turn our first floor into an attractive space for receptions or a museum or other creative uses that perhaps a focus group, through a focus group, our citizens can provide input as to what they believe the best use is.
Ms. Liebes, your time is expired.
I have like one more sentence. We can also use some of that budget to install a police substation, so there would be a police presence in the loop in a way that does not make the loop the central focus. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next request to speak is Ms. Bonnie Tesson.
Good evening, Mayor Crowe and honorable council people. My name is Bonnie Tesson, and I live at 7212 Shaftesbury. I've lived in U City for 42 years and have been a member of Heeman Park Pool for 41 years. I'm coming today to talk about the pool. I thought it was fitting since our pool session just ended with the last session being Labor Day. There was great attendance at Labor Day. Everybody enjoyed that. But I'm talking, I want to talk today about the fact that our pool is underutilized. First of all, I want to thank but everyone for the restoration, because after the flood, certainly there was questions whether or not we would be able to restore the restore the pool. I realized that the pandemic and flood of 2022 had extreme effects on the pool utilization. And this was beyond the control of the city. I was thrilled to see the pool repaired and reopened. But when the pool opened in June, it was to very limited hours. The hours have been 12 to 6 for those of you who come to the pool. Unfortunately, there's been no early morning swim. Early morning swim has been a tradition that our seniors have enjoyed and working people before they go to work, and we didn't have that this year. There was also no evening swim. Families with working people like to come home, gather their children, and go to the pool in the evening. That was impossible this year. Also, there were no programming, no classes, no exercise classes, and no swimming classes for anyone. My, both of my children learned to swim at that pool. So I'm kind of having an emotional attachment to the classes that have existed there. There were no classes, no summer camp, no special events. The special events in the past have been movie night, tea night, puppy pool party should have happened this last weekend. It didn't happen. Some U City residents have gone to other communities to meet their pool needs. We're losing people going to Clayton Aquatic Center, the J, Richmond Heights, because they can't get their needs met in University City. And this is a shame since we have this large historic pool that's unlike anything else in the county. Some of the some of the residents in other cities are being utilized by British Swim School. British Swim School is providing classes and swimming instructions at Richmond Heights. So we don't necessarily have to hire all people to have these things happen again. Also, part of the reason we heard for limited hours was guard availability. Our guards are provided by Midwest Pool Service, the same service that provides Clayton. Clayton has been open to eight every night. So somehow it's been provided for. If we don't want to hire swim instructors, this can be contracted for. For these reasons, I'd like to see an effort to be proactive over the winter and spring. And we can return the pool to a focal point and gem of our community. I think a special focus group or pool committee should be helpful so that when the pool opens again in May, we can be fully functional instead of half-functional. I'd like to see us go back, maybe not to the glory days, but something a little bit better than we provided this last season. I'd like to see a return of lap swim, swim classes of all ages, exercise class, and also the special events like the pool party, the puppy party, and those things that I mentioned. University City citizens should have all the amenities of the surrounding cities and be able to use our gigantic pool and not have to go outside of our community to have these needs met. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That concludes our citizen comments for this portion of the agenda. If we can now move forward, are there any council comments at this time? Hearing none. We have a public hearing on the agenda for the CBDG grant applications for 2024. I would like to open this hearing at 6:50 PM. Madam Clerk, do we have any requests to speak or any written comments for this hearing?
No.
Hearing none. I will close this hearing at 6:50 PM on CBDG applications for fiscal year 2024. You have before you now the consent agenda with items K1 through 8. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Motion made by Mr. McMahon. Is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Hales. Is there a discussion on the consent agenda? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. This evening, we do not have a city manager's report. There is no unfinished business. You have before you a new business resolution number 9525. Who would like to introduce? Mr. McMahon. Madam Clerk, may we have the first reading of bill number 9525?
Bill 9525, an ordinance amending section 130.580 of the Municipal Code of the City of University City, Missouri, relating to non-uniform employees retirement system benefit adjustments by increasing monthly benefits to retirees and their beneficiaries other than children by 2%.
Thank you very much. You now before you bill number 9526. Who would like to introduce? Mr. Hales would introduce. Madam Clerk, would you please have the first reading of bill number 9526?
Bill 9526, an ordinance amending section 130.590 and 130.600 of the Municipal Code of the City of University City, Missouri, relating to non-uniform employees retirement systems benefits or termination other than retirement or death, and vesting of benefits respectively by decreasing the number of years of service for vesting of benefits from 10 years to five years.
Thank you very much. We now have before you bill number 9527. Who would like to introduce? Introduced by Mr. Fuller. Madam Clerk, may we have the first reading of bill number 9527?
Bill 9527, an ordinance amending section 230.110 of the Municipal Code of the City of University City, Missouri, relating to solid waste collection fees and billing by increasing refuse collection rates on all units except single-family units.
Thank you very much. We'll now move to the council reports and business. Are there any reports from any of my colleagues on any of the commissions upon which they serve? Mr. Smotherson?
Thank you, Mayor Crowe. I just wanted to remind everybody, the Arts and Letters Starlight Concert Series is started again, and I believe they'd had a concert on September 10th. So just be aware that there is two more concerts on the 17th of this month and the what is it, the 24th of this month? And again, and that's going to, the 24th is going to end the season, but I think that there's actually going to be a special occasion or ceremony to honor the parks with that ending concert. Thank you.
Anyone else? Hearing nothing else, we will move forward with the second section of citizen participation. The next request to speak is Ms. Jen Jensen.
Just so you know that I'm okay. I fractured my hip four weeks, four months ago. But I'm here. My name is.
Glad to have you with us.
I'm, thank you. I'm Jen Jensen, all E's. And I I live at 706 Pennsylvania in the cul-de-sac where the first house. What else was I?
You're good.
That's it? Okay. I too would like to thank you for letting me come and say my piece. And at first I have to say I concur with everything that Bonnie Tesson reported tonight. So I want to first thank you for getting the pool restored last year and after the flood. So I sent out this report to all of you and including all the signatures I got, 80 signatures, and I did that in about two days. So basically, these are my two concerns. As Bonnie said, University City has a long history of providing swimming classes for its residents from the youngest to the oldest. So that would include all of you too. You can come and learn to swim. And by the way, I don't recall that I've seen any of you at the pool. We would love to have you come so that people can say, where the city council goes. We would like to request that the city once again provide this much-needed instruction to provide residents with a lifelong skill. Remember that swimming isn't just having fun in the water. It's a life-saving skill for teaching the kids and their parents how to be safe in the water. And our pool is perfect for that. If you haven't seen it, go look. It's absolutely perfect for it. We would like to see classes for water babies, which I taught for 10 years at Heeman Park Pool. We want to see it for adolescents, teenagers, and adults. In this time of the intense heat that we just went through, we are asking for reinstatement of programming that includes swimming and water safety lessons for all ages and exercise classes for teenagers and adults. These classes should be continued during the rest of the year at the auditorium like they used to be. Well, U City families, when the pool opened the end of June, I think it was the 23rd or 24th, I can't say exactly. We had two months, July and August, with a little bit of June to teach classes and have all of these that I've mentioned. But it didn't happen. Didn't happen at all. And hours from four or noon to six is impossible. What about people who are working? And they get home at 5:30? They don't have time to go over to the pool and swim? Those hours are ridiculous. And I too want very much to have the early morning swim back again. I am a swimmer. And I swim my laps at noon now. I did anyway before the season ended, but please recon. But uh, please reconsider this and tell our Parks and Recreation Director to get that back in place for Memorial Day. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Our next request to speak is Steve Glicker.
Steve Glicker, 7750 BlackBerry. I'm not here for the pool, even though I'm opponent that uh it should be extended any hours that uh it's beneficial to everybody. It's uh simply said. I'm here to revisit our zoning problems. I guess you got my pictures today. The problem's expanded. Seventy-three vehicle violations in the same neighborhood. Absolutely disgusting, Mr. Rose. Your performance is terrible. It's gone the wrong direction. Five years. We've been talking about this. You filled me with all kinds of excuses. Oh, we need new software. Oh, but it's in the due process. Uh, you know, we got favorable reviews on our latest survey. I bet if those people saw those conditions, they would backtrack on giving you a positive review. Did you see the pictures? They're horrible. And they're just, they're filled in one pocket over there. And I know that it goes farther out. But it's concentrated. Seventy-three violations in a six squat square block area. No license. Parked on her lawn. It's terrible. Mr. Smotherson, where are you at? You're supposed to be in those alleys all the time? I don't think so. It's nothing to brag about because they're disgusting. The truck that was on Plymouth, it took you a month and a half, over a month and a half to remove that. You wanted to know immediately, three minutes after I sent that, where is that located? What were you gonna do? It sat there for three weeks after I told you. Where's the immediacy? How come somebody has to look at that out their front door for seven weeks? That's deplorable. And it's your responsibility. You took the oath to uphold our charter and our ordinances. And you are nonexistent. The truck that sat on Becker and Olive, it's a golf shot away from your house. I sent, I was, posted the picture on next door. I've got it still. Months it sat there. The stain is still on the street. It's sat there for so long. It's pulverized into the pavement. And it's right around the corner from your house and you don't see it. You're more interested in what happens on your street and that you get your Third Ward T-shirt. You need to start performing. That's what people want. They voted you in. You have a responsibility. Don't worry about your T-shirt, or we can put that picture of that truck on the back of your T-shirt. How's that? So you can show everybody what you've done. Seventy-three violations. You got the power, you got the uh resolution to get it taken care of. They can be towed off. Then you came up with this whole PR promotion deal of two weeks of Operation Clear Path. So now does it go five years into hibernation again? Because that's what you've done. You've hibernated for five years. I've been up here numerous times. You don't do anything. You don't answer questions. And it's solidified with the parade of people up here in August. The two people from King Dell. You were supposed to be there to enforce a traffic ordinance when they most needed it. Absent. The two young ladies from Appleton. They had the commercial truck and the um unlicensed vehicles. It's still there today. They said it was six months. Now it's seven. Where you been? You get rid of it? How about the young lady from uh that lived on Mount Olive? She had a multitude of problems. The one that I focused in on was the Jeep that sat on her street unlicensed for two years. Where you been? I guess you're in the alleys. You're not seeing Mount Olive, are you? Mr. Sullivan talked about the trash in 6700 block of Barmer. You acknowledged his email. It's still there today. We were sold by the school district to replace Pershing School because, oh, poor lighting, poor learning environment. Have you looked around the perimeter of Pershing School? Tall grass. Cars parked in the yards.
Mr. Glicker, your plans expired.
Time to get it done, man. Five years.
Our next request to speak is Ms. Vera Carter-Smith.
Good evening and thank you for uh allowing me to speak at this time. Vera Carter-Smith at 8505 Elmore have been a resident of University City for, since 1953. However, at this time, if I may, I just want to give homage because I don't think that a lot of us would have been here today had it been involvement of September the 11th. So I give homage to that. Um, to our honorable mayor and all of our council members here. I still have a great concern of my environment and my neighborhood, uh which is 8500 Elmore, Third Ward. I have seen clotheslines hanging in the front yard with underwear on it. About flourish. Not in my block, Third Ward, Third Ward. Um, all kinds of crazy stuff like pink, purple uh paint on the um woodwork of houses. A lot of stuff is unkept because I did understand from one of the meetings I attended that the renters are pretty much so um the greater percentage is renters because of how things have been going. Would not been able to have owners due to low appraisals, et cetera. Um, also, uh in some of the observations there in that uh area close to me, there was a house with, I don't know, they must have had a party and there was um some kind of material hanging. So it was hanging for at least a year or two. So now um it's um, it's become very um fragrant and and so here comes the house that's next door to me. And I think that I have complained at least 10 times since uh the last five years. But this is a new resident. And I think sometimes when you do something at houses, it becomes like a disease. So here comes this house next door to me again. And he put up erected last on the 29th of August. He erected this tarp all around the backyard. It stands about, he got some poles. It's about six to eight feet high. My understanding when I moved into U City that sometimes of the corner houses are with respect to certain types of building material or are the fencing that would be approved. This is tarp. What do you do? Do you want to live around things like this? No. And so I've also observed that in which I have also put some emails out into some of the some of the departments here, you see, that the house now, new renter, one occupancy is on that. He seems to be running something out of this house that's not residential. So is there a reason for tarp eight feet high all around? And I said, are you having a party or something for, like, but he says, call it an event. Oh, to me, an event could be selling tickets or anything. I do have my concerns because as you can see, I am a senior and I said how long I've been in U City. I still want to live in U City. I want my home to be respected. I don't want the loud music. I don't want his events or whatever. And I am now targeting the owner of 8501 Elmore. If he cannot be an appropriate owner, renting out these different times to these people. And I told him, I said, would you please screen who you get in to rent? And he says, what is screening? I said, we'll get their history at least. But it wasn't nothing but a few days later that this new renter is now in and he thinks he has a business that is at, that's at 8505 Elmore and not on Olive Street where businesses are occurring. So my concern, and I wanted to ask, somebody eventually gets something to me to say, when I moved to U City, there were some guidelines and uh some city ordinance that something that we could go by how to live in U City. I don't know if any of that is being distributed anymore. But these people that are owners, the only thing that they want is the monies being uh generated as from these renters. And they could care less what's going on in these houses.
Uh ma'am, your time has expired.
Okay, and so with one second, I think that we have a TIF resource here in University City. And I do think that we can pull from that to help the Third Ward. Thank you.
That concludes our citizen participation. Are there any council comments, uh further council comments this evening? Uh, Mr. Smotherson?
Uh, thank you, Mayor Crowe. I just wanted to uh add a couple of uh things. Um, I missed the meeting on August 22nd. And so I just wanted to conclude this on the record in reference to the questions that I asked um after the Navigate um presentation. Um, and again, I thought it's important that it's this information be made public because I wasn't, again, not able to make that meeting. And there were two questions that I asked. Um, and one of those questions I asked was, um, Mr. Todd Sweeney made the suggestion during the meeting to not do the Trinity Building as a cost-saving measure. And so I asked him to explain why. And his response in, in reference to that was, um, the value of the Trinity Building remodel was bid at $7,684,660. There's another $2 million plus of site work associated with parking for the court's program. This was deemed to be an option to get the project back to 24 million um with limited impact to the current annex design. It would however remove the court's program from the project. Uh, the next question that I asked Mr. Sweeney was to verify the final cost of the Olivet Government Center that I believe Navigate was involved in. And this is, this is information that you can get on, online under, um, if you look up, first of all, if you look up the information that Navigate has on their website and also if you look up the Olivet City Center. And it's, and again, and I know this is a repeat, um, I do appreciate the other information that was given. But I actually wanted to be a little more specific in, in stating that the Olivet Center, City Center is a two-story, 36,980 square foot building on a three-acre site. The building houses the city administration office, council chambers, police department and fire department. The structure is a combination of steel and masonry. Uh, and the exterior skin is comprised of both cast stone brick, EIFS exteriors, storefront, curtain wall and architectural sheet metal. The site has many MSDMP, BMPs integrated into it, including bio-retention basin, a downstream defender unit as part of the site, utilities and, and pervious pavers in the parking areas. And so, and um, so the, the answer to that question, and he did submit and give me the um price or the, the project bid. And um, and I believe as was stated, I think that that is uh probably a total budget, total program budget of 13 million. And he gave some comparable numbers in reference to the um inflated rate uh in, in 2024. So again, I just wanted to make sure I read that into uh record. And I wanted to hand this to the city clerk and make sure she added that to the record. But I, the, the purpose of my questions and the reason I wanted to state that is because um, I did watch that meeting and I was concerned about what I was hearing in that meeting. Because the one thing that I wanted, I always say is that what we want is the best for our police department. But we also want the best for our city and the city government. And uh, and not less than. And so that's, that concerns me. And then the last thing that I will actually state is that the, the, the way that I think that we should actually proceed is by getting a comparable numbers on what new construction would look like compared to the renovation information that we have right now. Because I think that's actually critical in reference to moving forward. And that's the only way that we're going to be able to really move forward, honestly, is to know and get those comparable numbers. Um, and, and, and the last thing that I will actually say is that um I don't have all the answers. I absolutely don't have all the answers. But I am really interested in what we do with the 24 million that we've allotted and making sure that we do the best that we can do for our police and the city. Thank you.
Any other members of council? Uh, I would like to take a moment first and thank Ms. Dean for filling in this evening. Thank you very much. I'm sure this is not always the, what you signed up for, so we appreciate that very much. Uh, I know I join uh, uh Mr. McMahon and Mr. Fuller in thanking everyone for the bike tour on uh Sunday. It was, uh, couldn't have been a better day to tour all of our parks as we celebrate 100 years of parks in University City. A special thanks goes out to Mark Weiner and Mike Kinsey as well as Judy Prangie for organizing the event and to our police department for being there uh well, very well represented and keeping everyone safe and riding everyone through the city. So I think a good time was had by all, both residents and non-residents uh for the evening, for the, excuse me, for the day. So with that, I would welcome a motion to go into closed session according to Missouri Vice Statute 610.021, legal actions, causes of action or litigation involving a public governmental body in any confidential privileged communications between a public governmental body, force representatives or attorneys. Is there such a motion? Motion made by Mr. Fuller, seconded by Mr. Hales. Is there a discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councilman Hales.
Hi.
Councilman Fuller.
Hi.
Councilwoman Smotherson.
Hi.
Councilman Clay.
Hi.
Councilman Klein.
I.
Councilman McMahon.
Hi.
Mayor Crowe.
Hi. Thank you. We'll now go into closed session immediately upon uh adjourning the open session. Thank you, folks, for joining us this evening.